Be your crowd pleaser. Come out for the fun at Glendale High School Gymnasium between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. Admission is $5 plus canned food to benefit the Salvation Army. For more information, please call 818-246-5588. Stay connected with Glendale's exciting news and events by following MyGlendale on Twitter. You can also sign up for the Glendale City Connection, our free monthly email newsletter to keep you in the know. Visit the city's website to learn more. That's it for this week's edition of Glendale's Look Ahead.
May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Manukian.
Please join me in a salute to our nation's flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands my nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. On October 5, 1944, as our nation was deeply engaged in the Second World War to free the world of the chokehold of fascism, President Franklin D. Roosevelt spoke to the nation from the White House and said the following about the upcoming elections that November: "The continuing health and vigor of our democratic system depends upon the public spirit and devotion of its citizens, which finds expression in the ballot box. Today, many decades removed from the sacrifices that were made in that war, we still continue to carry out the sacred sacrament of civic duty and vote in our local elections. We pray for everyone who participates in this ritual to renew our devotion to our democratic system, pray for the candidates and their loved ones, for the volunteers who have worked on their campaigns, for the city employees who have put this election together, for the volunteers who work at our polls, for the people who follow the process closely and report diligently to inform the rest of the electorate. And most importantly, we pray for the individuals who serve in our armed forces to preserve our right to express ourselves through the ballot box. We pray for the continued success and growth of our city, the jewel city of Glendale, and pray for harmony and love tonight and always. Amen."
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the April 2, 2013, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March 20, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next, under Agenda, under Presentation and Appointments at 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of April 9, 2013.
Mr. Ochoa, you have the preview.
Yes, sir. We have for the April 9, Glendale Housing Authority, one item, a public hearing, Director of Community Development regarding Section 8 Public Housing Agency, or PAHA, five-year and annual plan for the fiscal year 1314. We have, under the City Council Agenda, the items, including minutes, Director of Public Works Facilities, Management Section, Contract Consolidation, and that is the only item of business on that agenda.
What's next?
At 3B, Proclamation Designating the Week of April 14 through the 20, 2013, as National Library Week.
Okay, I have a proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Library, Arts and Culture Department will join libraries around the United States to celebrate National Library Week, April 14th and 20th, literary services began at the Library, Arts and Culture Department in 1986, and they've now expanded and include English as a second language and GED, the General Education Test. Whereas 75 literacy program students received close to 4,800 hours of instruction last year through one-on-one tutoring and conversation classes. The literacy program continues to seek and recruit volunteers who are interested in having a positive impact on the lives of other community members. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April 14 through the 20th as National Library Week and invite Glendale residents to volunteer to help empower Glendale area adults to improve their English language, speaking, writing, and reading skills.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Quintero, council members, City Manager Ochoa, and city staff. I would like to thank you for this proclamation. And one more thing for all the people watching, it's going to be Fine Free Week, the 14th through the 20th. If there's any dusty library books that you're afraid of returning that have been keeping you from using library services, you can bring them in and nobody will be arresting you when you come into the library. And I just want to say that I'm grateful to all the students and tutors that I have in the program. As one of the tutors just mentioned to me, I wouldn't have a job if it weren't for the tutors and students who are providing these services. And I just want to mention that we're looking to expand the literacy program, so we need students who want help with English language skills and any tutors who are looking to volunteer their time and want to help somebody else improve their English skills. The contact information is 818-548-6450. And you can also get information off the website at library.ciglendale.ca.us. And I just want, there's two people who are going to say a few words. We have Siranush, who recently passed the GED, who's going to speak first, and then after her will be Olga, who has been a volunteer in the literacy program for six years.
Hello, everyone. I'm Siranush Karivian. It's just here that I came from Armenia. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you, then Glendale Public Library, for this kind of opportunity. I want to say thank you to my teacher, because he helped me to study the test book for GED. And I think that I'm lucky, because it's just here and I passed GED exam here. I want to say to the people who wants to take GED, to come to Public Library, because they really helped to pass the test. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. It is an honor for me to be standing before you and speaking on behalf of the 30 volunteers in our program and the 75 students that comprise the Adult Literacy Program. Since 1986, the literacy program has been committed to help these individuals hone their basic English skills, reading and writing. In more recent years, however, obviously, our focus has shifted to ESL and helping students such as Siranush. From the mother who wants to improve her English skills as a means to communicate more effectively with her child, as well as the staff at school, to obviously, the young lady who wants to obtain her GED as a newly arrived individual here in Glendale, we definitely do our part to try to help that. As a volunteer, we are afforded the unique opportunity to become catalysts of change, but beyond that, we are afforded the opportunity, in my opinion, to be friends of the most resilient members in our community. On behalf of the entire Glendale Public Library Literacy Program, I thank you for validating the work that we do, but most importantly, the accomplishments of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. It is an excellent program. I can vouch for it. Years ago, I used to send people there on a regular basis and do ESL, but just as important, a GED. That's the key to education in the United States for adults, so very happy to have you here tonight. All right, next, please.
Next, at 3C is the reappointment of Laura Perazian to serve as a tenant member of the Housing Authority.
Is she here to defend herself?
No. Perazian actually is a poll worker today.
Huh?
She is a poll worker.
That's right. That's more important. I'll booth 3C.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
For is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Manukian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everyone noticed, I was not here last week. I was very ill, and I was knocked off my feet, actually, for about four or five days. It was, it was very difficult. It was a very difficult week. I want to thank all the well wishes from my colleagues and staff, and those from the public who sent emails wishing me well. I also want to say that I'm the only one wearing the sticker, if you notice. Look at the other ones.
Mine fell on the ground in the.
That's a likely excuse, but.
That's true. I had to.
But I'm the only one who voted here today. I've done my civic duty, and I challenge my colleagues to get out there and vote. Please vote today. I know you're registered voters. And if there's still time, if there are individuals on the public who have not voted, today is Election Day. Get out and do your civic duty. It is your responsibility to get out and vote today. So get out there and vote. I want to also tell a little story about my adventures over the, not last weekend, but the weekend before then. I did my, excuse me, monthly Trail Safety Patrol at Val Vista Motorway, and I was wearing my yellow jersey that said Trail Safety Patrol in the back. And I had parked my bike in front of 2740 Val Vista Drive, and I was sitting on the sidewalk, and of course, from the house, they probably could see in my, it said on my jersey, Trail Safety Patrol, and I was waiting for my partner to come up, and so we can go together. Soon as he came up, I left my bike there, and I went, and I shook hands, and I said, "Hey, how's it going? Let's go." And as soon as I turned around, the sprinklers were on. My bike was wet from, you know, from being parked over there. And it was odd that the individual in the house found it offensive for me to be sitting in front of their, in front of their house, I guess, and that they turned the sprinklers on to make sure that we don't stay there, even though my shirt said Trail Safety Patrol. When we went to the patrol and we came back, I saw that the front of the house was full of cars, so there was no area to park a bike. So even after we left, they moved their cars in front of the house, so we would not, we would not be there. So it was, it was kind of odd that these people at 2740 Val Vista, and I want to thank them for, you know, getting my bike wet on a, on a kind of cold morning, and, and kind of pushing away individuals who are volunteering their time to better the safety of the individuals who are using the trail. So that is my little story from my Trail Safety Patrol over, over two Sundays ago.
Well, my question is, did they recognize you?
I don't, I don't know, because I had a helmet on and, you know, sunglasses.
Anything personal?
It could have been.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manukian, you wonder if I voted or not. I was the only one in there, was getting ready to leave. Somebody that.
It's my showtime.
I'm talking to you.
Oh, you're talking to me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Yasepian walked in behind me. He can vouch for the fact I voted just before him.
I don't think he'll vouch for anything for you.
Oh, well, case a rouse a rouse.
But you did vote. I'll take your word for it.
Thank you.
Okay.
See you another day.
Thank you. I am very disappointed at the lack of courtesy that certain residents displayed towards bicyclists, especially those who are volunteering to help the city. I hope that that's a rare example, and not all of our other residents act that way. The voting, I did vote absentee, and I think it appears to be the wave of the future. Typically, in our Glendale elections, we've surpassed the 50 percent vote by absentee. That's a convenient and timely way to cast your ballot. My next comment is a little off, but maybe someone from the city can help. I've been approached by many residents who apparently were hit with a recent increase in the charter cable rates. And they, many of them elderly on fixed incomes, asked if there was a way that we could avoid that. And I did mention to them that many of the local channels, including some of the ethnic language channels, Spanish, Armenian, Persian, Russian, et cetera, are available over the airwaves by use of an antenna. Is it possible for our IT department to give us just a brief explanation as to what type of antenna? My understanding is a simple rabbit ears connected to the back of a digital television would make all these channels accessible in high definition also. I'm a little confused on that, but a few people that I've spoken to say, yes, in fact, that is a viable alternative to paying the cable fees, at least the basic charges that residents would otherwise be forced to pay. So I'm not sure if that's IT, or GWP, or communications. Just a brief explanation. I know the residents would appreciate that.
Certainly. We'll put something together. Certainly won't be from, I think, either the city attorney or myself, but our VCR is still blink 12 o'clock, so, but we will get ISD to give you back some feedback there.
Well, that would work. You just would need a better, better antenna, just rabbit ears, because rabbit ears would not get the reception well enough. You would need a little more, something a little more sophisticated to get the HD channels in a, in a format where it's good.
In my.
If someone could explain that.
Certainly.
And where they're available, what the proximate cost is, to at least give.
Radio Shack. Right. Yeah, my garage, I have a little flat screen that clean my bicycles, motorcycles, and workout, and it's amazing the reception that it gets. I got it at Radio Shack. It works really well.
Well, bring it in. Show and tell, maybe you can explain it.
Mayor?
Good day.
Yes, I voted as well, and from what I understand, it's a very low turnout election right now, as far as it goes, and we really need people to get out and vote. If you don't vote, you can't complain. Remember that. And we're going to, we're going to know who voted, and we're not going to let you in here to complain if you don't vote. But yes, it is our responsibility, and it is very, very important. What happens locally and the people who sit in local office determine a lot of things having to do with your quality of life right here in the city. So please go and vote, and it's not too late even to read the newspaper. The Glendale News Press from the last issue had a whole lot of information about all the candidates, so you can take a look at that, and you can still vote until 8 o'clock, so you've got plenty of time. I wanted to just mention a few events that I attended. First and foremost, the State of the City, which was hosted by the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, and of course, our mayor gave a really wonderful rundown about what's happened in the city of Glendale over the last year, and some of my colleagues were there, and it was very, very well attended. I don't know that there were many empty seats in the very large ballroom at the Hilton. The mayor and I also attended the opening of a new bank in town, Manufacturers' Bank, and I wanted to welcome them again to Glendale. They're a bank that specializes in small business, so they told me that they picked Glendale because we have so many small businesses here, and they felt that we were really positioned to be the center, that we were the center of the tri-city area, and they were wanting to move into this market for a while. They're at 520 North Brand, so if you have a small or large business and are looking for a new bank, check them out. I attended an open house for another one of our new businesses, Kinetic Lighting, which is in the San Fernando corridor. They have a very large space, and they do all sorts of lighting, from rentals for the film industry, to large concerts, to specialty lighting for banquets and for special events, and they also do tables and things like that. Very interesting company. They told me they're very happy to be in Glendale. They've been amazed at how well, how good the services are. When they've needed the police, they've come right away, anything they've needed from the city, and this is a plug for our, our staff from planning and economic development. They said they've been treated extremely well, and they're talking to their friends about Glendale and getting other businesses to move in. They said they can't believe that Disney and DreamWorks are down the block from them. They do a lot of business with them, and that they found that by moving to the corridor, to the creative corridor, that they're getting more business from Disney, that someone at Disney actually said, "Oh, you're right down the block from us, so we'll use you for more things, because we can just walk over and see your products." So business owners, take note. Lastly, and I hope I'm not forgetting anything, some of us attended the Caesar Chavez Commemorative Event at Pacific Park this weekend, and it was very well attended, and not just because of the free food, but people were really interested to come in and hear the speakers and see the wonderful entertainment, including from Mayor Quintero's wife, Janie, who did flamenco dancing with her troupe. But it was a really great event, and the speaker was excellent. So thanks to everyone who made that possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I'll talk about the same events, starting with the bank opening. They had a choice. It's actually a subsidiary of Mitsui, the big international bank. They could have gone anywhere they wanted. They chose brand and chose a great location. The manager is actually a local woman who's been in the banking industry 20-plus years, so a sort of a net effect, I think, of all we're doing in the downtown. The Caesar Chavez Event was great. The speaker was excellent, the attorney who talked about what it was like for his dad here in California as they were growing up. He's now a very successful lawyer. And the State of the City was great. The Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank them. It was a full house, and there were a number of honorees, the Man of the Year, Woman of the Year, Businesses of the Year. They actually chose Pacific BMW. I had the opportunity to present the award for everything that they've done in this city, including a personal donation from the owner, David Ho, of $2 million. The David Ho Foundation gave $2 million to our local, what used to be called Project Achieve, and now called Ascensia. And then I pointed out how well Glendale is doing financially, not only in our own internal budget, but also the city itself. The worst is over in terms of the Great Recession that we've all suffered through, and we're certainly headed in the right direction. So it was a great event, and I'm glad you all were there to spend some time with the chamber members. Anything from the staff? All right, next, please.
Next is Consent Items, including Minutes, a following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
I have a motion.
Move this consent calendar at 5.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is Oral Communications. However, this is the portion that we receive for, reserved for three-minute community announcements. We will revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Leon Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. First of all, Mr. Mayor Quintero, it's been a pleasure coming here week after week to talk about all the goodies at the library, and everybody should remember that when you come to the library for a lecture, they're all free. You get your parking validated right next door for three hours. Now, as a follow-up to the National Library Week, the end, near the end of that week, we have a special author coming here to talk about Haiti. Amy Willens is not only nationally known, but LA Times talked about this book, and she's got awards for the book, and the book is A Letter from Haiti. And I'd like to take a second to point out to the audience that we're aware that Glendale did their share at the time of the Haiti earthquake. All the voluntary organizations in Glendale, the civic organizations, they did their share in sending money and funds to Haiti to be used for great purposes. With that in mind, I'd like to read a couple of things that Chuck Wyke, who I work with at the library, who does these beautiful flyers, he talked about as far as Amy Willens is concerned. And incidentally, Amy Willens teaches in the Literary Journalism Program at the UC Irvine, and like I say, she's nationally known. Haiti emerged from the dust of the 2010 earthquake like a powerful spirit, and the stunning book describes the country's day-to-day struggle and relationship to outsiders who came, who come to help out. There are human rights reporters gone awry, movie stars turned aid workers, priests and musicians coming, running for president, and doctors turned diplomats. A former U.S. president worked as a house builder, and voodoo priests tried to control elections. One of the comments about the book, excellent and illuminating. It's Willens's honesty about her own role in Haiti and of so many other American visitors to that country that ultimately distinguishes her books, most of all, from other works that cover the similar terrain. And as far as Amy Willens is concerned, the book, Farewell, Fred Voodoo, A Letter from Haiti, is a lecture you don't want to miss, and it's going to be 7 o'clock on the 18th of April. I gave flyers to everybody here in the room, and I'll be going around to the various organizations making sure they get flyers, and this is an event you'll enjoy, and you'll feel.
First of all, Mr. Mayor Quintero, it's been a pleasure coming here week after week to talk about all the goodies at the library. And everybody should remember that when you come to the library for a lecture, they're all free. You get your parking validated right next door for three hours. Now, as a follow-up to the National Library Week, near the end of that week, we have a special author coming here to talk about Haiti. Amy Willens is not only nationally known, but LA Times talked about this book, and she's got awards for the book. And the book is "A Letter From Haiti." And I'd like to take a second to point out to the audience that we're aware that Glendale did their share at the time of the Haiti earthquake. All the voluntary organizations in Glendale, the civic organizations, they did their share in sending money and funds to Haiti to be used for great purposes. With that in mind, I'd like to read a couple of things that Chuck Wyke, who I worked with at the library, who does these beautiful flyers, he talked about as far as Amy Willens is concerned. And incidentally, Amy Willens teaches in the Literary Journalism Program at the UC Irvine, and like I say, she's nationally known. Haiti emerged from the dust of the 2010 earthquake like a powerful spirit, and the stunning book describes the country's day-to-day struggle and relationship to outsiders who came, who come to help out. There are human rights reporters gone awry, movie stars turned aid workers, priests and musicians coming, running for president, and doctors turned diplomats. A former U.S. President worked as a house builder, and voodoo priests tried to control elections. One of the comments about the book, excellent and illuminating. It's Willens's honesty about her own role in Haiti, and of so many other American visitors to that country, that ultimately distinguishes her books, most of all, from other works that cover the similar terrain. And as far as Amy Willens is concerned, the book, Farewell, Fred Voodoo: A Letter From Haiti, is a lecture you don't want to miss. And it's gonna be 7 o'clock on the 18th of April. I gave flyers to everybody here in the room, and I'll be going around to the various organizations, making sure they get flyers. And this is an event you'll enjoy, and you'll feel real close to Haiti and what you try to do to support Haiti at the time of their earthquake. You'll also find out about the history of Haiti and other years and other times. Thank you very much.
Next, please.
Next item on the agenda under action items, ADA is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Maple Park Improvement Project. ADA 1 is a motion approving proposed project design and directing design consultants to complete the construction documents. ADA 2 is a resolution appropriating $350,000 to provide funds for the project.
Ms. Torchua.
Yes, sir. We often hear questions and field questions about what's being done with fees and funds that are collected to support recreational opportunities, quality of life opportunities, particularly in South Glendale. And this is one that is very near and dear to our hearts. The Maple Park Improvement Project, that is just around the corner, is being, entering the period at which it will be designed. So with that, Mr. Duran, our CSP Director, will be giving you an overview of what that design program will look like. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Torchua. Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, along the lines of what Mr. Torchua just mentioned. We are very fortunate in Glendale that even in these difficult economic times, and with virtually no new CIP funding, that we are able to continue to invest in the development of new parks, or the renovation of existing parks, particularly in Southern Glendale. And through the availability and the use of other funding sources, such as state and federal grant funds and mitigation fee funds, that we are putting those funds to good use, and we're very lucky to have those funding sources. As a result, and for example, current park projects that we are working on just in Southern Glendale include the Clark Park Safety and Security Improvement Project, which was just completed this past February, the Maryland Avenue Park New Development Project, which is out to bid, and we hope to start construction within the next couple of months, the Pacific Park Artificial Turf Project, which will be coming to council within the next one to two months for authorization to bid, the Palmer Park Renovation Project, which just started design. And then today, we have before you the Maple Park Site Improvement Project Design Approval. So in terms of the Maple Park Improvement Project, in terms of background, this project is approximately 3.8 acres in size. The existing amenities include children's play structures, a tennis court, walking paths, picnic areas, a community building, and onsite parking. In 2011, the city did complete a $4.5 million renovation of the community building, $3 million of which was funded with Prop 40 state grant funds. And so the next phase is the park site improvements themselves. In May 2011, the council did approve an appropriation of CDPG funds to fund this project. In May 2012, the council approved the design contract with Narduli Studio, staff, and the design consultant conducted community outreach. And based on feedback, which included comments on fitness equipment selection, and location, amenity adjacencies, and the addition of more picnic areas, the project estimate is currently at $1,127,000. Our current project budget is $814,000 in CDPG funds. Therefore, we are also requesting $350,000 appropriation in mitigation fee funds in order to complete this project in its current proposed scope. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Susan Narduli, who will walk you through the design elements of the project.
Mayors, members of the council, I'm delighted to be here tonight to present the design for Maple Park to you. This park builds on the work done in the previous project, the renovation of the community building. This phase, we're addressing the exterior spaces of the park, and it will offer some added amenities. It creates a strong link between the park and the building. It uses new technologies and improved access to create a safer environment, and I believe will create a very welcoming and more beautiful park experience for all the members of the community for years to come. This first slide is an overview of the major goals for the design. I'm gonna briefly go through this and just read through some of these bullet points, and if I can get this laser pointer to work. So, up here, we have improved landscaping and irrigation. There's gonna be a new irrigation system throughout the entire park, and there are areas of new landscaping with a focus on sustainable planting. Reinforce the connection of the park to the community building and create welcome entry from both Maple and Raleigh Street. The park fronts on two residential streets. On the north side of the park is Maple Street, and on the south side is Raleigh. There's a small street here, and some residential multifamily buildings there. Retain the open space for flexible play. There are two large green spaces in the park, and we've, for the most part, maintained those as open free-play areas. This is the existing tennis court. We're going to be upgrading that. We're adding some new site furnishings and fitness equipment. We're expanding the children's play area. This is the play area as it is now, and this is the existing play structure. We're keeping that, but we're expanding to the west and to the east and creating another toddler area. We're upgrading the signage to make it conform to the new Glendale signage that, the program that was recently developed. We're upgrading the exterior restroom facilities. This is the, this block here are the exterior restrooms. And I'll just show you in this drawing that right now, to get to them, you come through the back, and you come through this very, you know, pretty dark, covered corridor, and you enter the restrooms. And we felt that we really wanted to improve the access, and at the same time, upgrade those restrooms to make them ADA accessible. And then lastly is to upgrade the lighting and the security cameras throughout the park. So we have extended the police drive path, so it can go entirely through the park, and we've been working with city staff and the police department to enhance the security This is the site plan for our proposal, and you can see that we have a lot of little numbers over the plan, and they key into the legend on the right side. I'm not gonna go through all of these items at this point, but we can use it for reference as we move through the presentation if we need to. The first thing that I wanted to talk about is identity and wayfinding. The current entrance, the current entrance, if you can look at this little diagram up here, this is the community building, and during the renovation, they made quite a lovely lobby in this area, with glass doors on the north side and glass doors on the south side that connect to the main reception area. And there is no existing, the existing entrance from the south side at Raleigh really does not exist. So if you're walking along Raleigh and coming into the park, you're either coming in from the corner way over here to enter the building, and if you're coming from parking, you have to kind of, you fumble around a little bit, and you try to find a way. It feels like you're really going in the back door. So in our proposal, we've created a new entry, which directly links the south entrance lobby to the street, and also creates a handicap-accessible ramp to the parking. On the north side, the north side existing entry is actually in the right spot, but as you come close to the building, there's this funny little jog. You actually have to come down here and walk over there, and walk over there. And that's the way I first came to the community building. I had a pretty hard time finding that front door. So on the north side, we just widened it a bit, and we've added some landscaping on either side to reinforce those entries. And here you can see a little perspective of that new entry along Raleigh. In terms of the, another way that we are, wanted to develop the park identity and also support wayfinding throughout the park, is to, there, if you remember on the plan, there are these paths, and many people use them for jogging throughout the park, and they're pretty, I mean, there's nothing remarkable about them, let me just say. So what we've done is we've added a series of markers, and you have the existing concrete path, and our intention is to score them and color them, and then add a boulder to the edge of it. So it kind of creates a nice rhythm to these paths, and a way to, you know, something a little more memorable, something that, a place you can meet somebody. These boulders provide some very informal seating, and on them, we're, one of the things that happened when we first started researching Glendale, and it's so remarkable, that many, many people from so many countries that have lived here, and we wanted to communicate that in some way. So we've done a little bit of research on that, and the idea is that we would take, on these boulders, if you can see it here, and just sandblast into the boulder, the word "welcome" in English and in many of the other languages, and some of them will be left blank for people that come in the future that we don't know yet, that will come from other countries. It's kind of something to, you know, be a little unique to this park. The boulders, which I was so excited when I was talking to Adriné, and we were talking about bringing some native materials, and these boulders come from the local mountains and foothills, and this is actually pictures of them that she gave us. So they're gonna come to the park. We get them for nothing. We are transporting them, but they're there, and they're there for us, and we've used them in other areas of the park as well. And so they, not only, their, boulders are great, because you can sit on them, you can hang out on them, but also they reinforce this identity of the park. One of the new amenities to the park is fitness equipment. We have done a lot of research on this, and there's been some outreach about the proper equipment that the community would like to use. And we've created two fitness areas. If you look at the little drawing here, here's the tennis court, and along this path, we've got this area here with fitness equipment. And then, in this area here, to the west of the community building, we've created a little zone, and the idea is that we're putting equipment there and some tables there to encourage teens to come there. We want the teens in our parks, and we want them to be lifting weights and hanging out with friends at tables and sharing food. So as we're imagining this area here to the east of the community building, which is, the doors to the meeting room are right here, it's created a little, a nice zone. It's in the public, but it's not right in the public. You know, it's got a little bit of beautiful shade, and we think that it will be a really nice space for those older kids that need a place to hang out. And these are some images of the specified fitness equipment. We, as I said, we did some outreach, and we think that these are pieces of equipment that the community will really like and enjoy in this park.
Can I ask a question about that?
Mm-hmm.
So, did you show this actual pictures to the community members, and this was what they picked?
Yeah, what we did, we had, and I think Adriné can speak to some of it, because I was only at one of the meetings, and I know she also went out to some of the schools. But the meeting that we attended, we had an outreach meeting, and we actually printed out photos of the equipment, like eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheets, and we had little circular, like stickers, and people voted on them.
Okay, 'cause I've been to different parks that have fitness equipment, and you may not know it, but I'm over 30, and I don't think I would, I could use any of these, or very many of them. So I don't know if there's, if you only asked younger people, or if there's any options. You talked about, for instance, older people lifting weights, but there's nothing that's sort of weightlifting here. I mean, these are, if you're over the age of 50, I mean, having things where you have to do, I don't know, this just looks to me like definitely a younger person's set of equipment.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to, I've seen fitness parks that have sort of stationary bicycles and elliptical machines, and I know there's maintenance issues, and maybe it's not practical. I mean, that's possible, but do you really think that someone over the age of 50 could do many of these, or any of these?
I can.
I can.
I know you guys, you're different.
I bet you could do a sit-up and stretching, and...
And do a pair of bars.
Get those chin-ups going.
Not the chin-ups. I can tell you, chin-ups are definitely out.
You know, you're...
Push-ups and dips.
You're absolutely right about that equipment, and we did look at the, at some of the movable equipment, and the decision was made not to use it in the park because of maintenance. Then we really, I think that the part of it was just seeing how it tested in outdoor environment.
Right. Well, I'm definitely not an expert in fitness equipment. I wish I was an expert in fitness. I just want to be sure that whatever we put in can be used by people of all ages.
That's a point very well taken. Any other questions about this? So, as I said in the, when we looked at the site plan, this is the existing play area, and this is the existing play equipment. And what we wanted to do was, we were leaving that equipment there, is to expand on the play area and create another kind of zone. So what we did is we expanded it to become a toddler zone, with the idea of kind of increasing the ages of kids that can engage in some active play. So, this is the toddler area here, and what we've done is we've created this kind of series of grass mounds that the kids can climb on and play on, and this is sand, and these are boulders, and there's some benches and seating, and they can easily come from this area over to this area as well. So by, 'cause the current area now is grass, and it's not really used by children that much, that children congregate. So we've taken this whole area here and really created a nice zone for kids. And then across from it, you can see that we have, it's on another slide as well, we have some picnic tables. The, what we're calling is this, the snake, is this hedge that winds around the play area, because this is a street here, and it's, I think, a beautiful element. It does two things. The first thing it does is it creates a nice safety barrier for the kids that might want to kind of run out onto the street. So instead of having a fence, we've used nature to create that hedge. And the other thing is, I think, that it creates a nice barrier from the residential side, looking into the park.
How tall are the, I'm just curious, how tall are the grass mounds about?
Well, here's a little, we have a perspective.
I saw the perspective. And I think the toddler idea is a really great idea. I was just recently in New York, in Brooklyn, in a new, very large new park they just did along the river, and they've got a lot of different children's areas. But I noticed that even in the areas for young children, that they have some pretty, some play areas that are not very tame. You know, they've got a lot of stuff that kids can get into. So I guess I would just say that we shouldn't, you know, that looks like it's four feet tall, we shouldn't be afraid to give them a little more, you know, because I think a kid would be much more attracted to this if it was, you know, seven feet tall, or six feet tall, as long as there was, I mean, I don't see an injury, you know, or six feet even. But I mean, just knowing how kids, you know, five-year-olds play, they'll get bored with something that's just, you know, two feet tall, three feet tall.
I hear you. Milet is here from our landscape architectural firm, Katie Spitz and Associates. I don't know if you have anything to add to, on the berm height, 'cause she worked on the berm height.
I'm not trying to micromanage it. I'm just saying, you know, let's not assume that kids don't like to kind of get rough and get into stuff, too.
You also have to give us your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Milet Libenow. I work with Catherine Spitz Associates. We're a co-designer for the improvements of Glendale Maple Park. Regarding the berm heights, we did study, and I know it's, we are, we wanted to raise it up and give more challenging play spaces for the kids. But we're also trying to balance the turf and maintenance, and how mobility could it be, what type of turf we're gonna put in. So we're trying to stay, and it's not a very big width-wise. So what we try to go here is to stay within the width that we have, give them a variety of heights. The heights right now are from a foot to four feet, so from a little young toddler to two-and-a-half-years-old, up to three, three-and-a-half, four-years-old can actually play there. So that was the main idea behind what heights can we do. There, we're still, we're still flexible about height, but we're trying not to get beyond what maintenance could do with the grasses.
And this is an image of the boulders. If you remember from the other slide, there's some boulders scattered, and a ring of boulders around the sand area. And we thought it would be fun for the kids if there are these little engravings hidden within the boulders that they could discover that could refer to some of their, you know... refer to some of their, you know, stories that they've read and kind of magic things that kids like to think about and discover. And it also reinforces that whole engraving in the boulders, like we're doing along the walkway where we have the text. This is an image of some of the furnishings. There are existing concrete tables there, and many of them are remaining. They're rectangular. They're similar to what you've seen on many parks. We tried to add a little more playful element, especially since these are going right next to the children's area and right next to the teen area. They're on, on concrete pads that are circles, and actually, in some of our outreach, that's what the teens asked for. They asked for circular tables, and I hadn't really thought about that before, but I thought it was a great idea. We have found some that we think will work very nicely. And then in the existing children's play area, circular benches and little, you know, colorful furnishings that they can climb on and eat on and call their own. This slide is about the restroom upgrade. I think that if you've been there, you might know that the, you know, we certainly need to provide some renovation to it because of ADA accessibility issues, and we are replacing all of the interior equipment that's in there. But what I was talking about before, this is the existing entrance, and it looks fine here, except that what you're not really seeing is that to get to it, you're coming through this, as I said, a very dark corridor. And, you know, you have to think that the people that are using these restrooms are, a lot of them are coming right from the play area. They're kids and their moms, and it's, we wanted to make it, open it up and make it more user-friendly. In between those two existing restrooms was a storage area. So we met with staff, and they were fine with removing that storage area because that corridor is actually going to become a nicer and a bigger storage area for them in the back, and we have a nice wide entry from the front now for those restrooms. This is our landscape strategy. The focus is on sustainability and kid-friendly planting and creating identity. We already talked about the snake hedge is a beautiful landscape element that also has a second use of being a safety barrier for the kids in the play areas. And if you have any specific questions about the planning, Millet can come up and address them. And the same, we have a site plan here with a legend for all of the plantings. For security, this is something that we've taken very seriously. We've worked very closely with city staff on this. One of the things that we are doing is we're creating a police drive path. Right now, the police do come in through here from this, near the existing parking, and, but there's no nice connection here. And what they really want is they want a way to come in in one, in one entrance and exit another direction. They don't want to have to turn around and come back. So we have an improvement here to widen this existing path and make a connection between this lower, this, the southern side of the path and the northern side of the path. And so now they have what, and we did a walkthrough with them, and this is what they want. It's a direct north-south drive path. We're also replacing all of the lighting that is there, and it's being replaced with LED fixtures that will provide some very beautiful lighting, and they even have an automatic dimmer if nobody is there, and so they're very energy-efficient. This is an image of one of the fixtures we've been looking at. It's really quite nice. And then we're also going to provide, be providing some additional security cameras. This is the last slide, and in closing, I just want to say that throughout this project and working with city staff, there's been a real focus on trying to make this park better for all of the people that might want to use it. And we've worked to increase, to make it more exciting for people of all different ages by creating an area for teens, an area for toddlers, the equipment. Now, you're telling me that it might be a little rough for anybody over 50, but we'll definitely think about that. But our intention is to make this a very usable park for the community and to welcome and celebrate diversity and to support the city's policy of sustainability.
Any questions?
Maybe I should have said over 60. No, I think it's a very nice, great improvement. I love the toddler, the tot area. I love the plant choices, the native plants and the sustainable design, the boulders. I think it's, it's a lot more programmed than it was, which will be nice, but still a lot of unprogrammed area. The fitness area, I'm sure, will be great, and I, you know, like I said, I just want to be sure that we have something for everybody there.
Definitely.
But, you know, overall, I think it's going to be a great improvement to the neighborhood, a great, sort of a really revitalized park, really a new park in a lot of ways. So I'm glad to see it, and I think you guys did a great job.
The comments?
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. Let me start by saying that I'm, I'm glad to see that we're continuing our focus on Maple Park. We've been criticized as a city of not having enough parkland and park space, especially in southern Glendale. All we need is about three or four more Maple Parks, and it would certainly go a long way towards meeting, meeting the demand. So, that being said, I want to make sure that we're doing the absolute best that we can in this park. So let me ask you that, I see that 300-some thousand is coming from our mitigation fee, which is the parks and library mitigation fee. It's the fee that we put on all new projects towards creating parks and libraries. Is there, were there any budget constraints that you felt that inhibited you from making this an even better park? And what were those, and if so, what were the other features that you would have suggested if you had, let's say, an extra couple hundred thousand dollars?
That's coming to me.
Well, you designed it. I mean, this is your design?
Yes.
So...
Um...
I mean, speak freely. Don't look at them. This is, I'm not saying we have that money, but I...
Be careful when a politician says, "speak freely."
I, I, there are, there are a couple of things that we did explore, and I guess I'm not, I'm not absolutely sure in that additional 350,000 whether this is covered or not. I must be honest, but you could see in some of the slides, we talked about additional parking. Now that the community building has been redone, and there's a multipurpose room on the second floor, we met with, with the staff there, and they just have, don't not have enough parking. So that was one thing that they asked for, and we did a little scheme to, and I think we're able to get nine more spaces plus five more tandem in that. It's not a lot, but given the site, it's, it was something. Another thing that we have discussed, the meeting room on the west side, right near the teen area. If you go there now, it's like a metal cage, and it's got metal doors. It's the first thing that I said when I was there. I said, "This doesn't look like an entrance. It looks like some security exit." But in, then when you're in the meeting room, you actually see, well, there are some windows. There are opportunities to open that up. To open that up and make a connection to the park. That would be a real amenity, both from the outside as a welcoming people into the park on that side, as a visual connection, and also as part of the meeting room. So you're, you're embracing the park. There was a discussion about extending the patio area on that side and maybe having a canopy, so there could be a little, an outdoor area there. There are kids' programs there. They could paint out there. There's a, there's a lot of program that could happen with that kind of facility. Other than that, you know, I mean, you know, yeah, we'd like a little more money for landscaping and, and, you know, maybe some low-level lighting to reinforce the entrances. There are things that were discussed and, you know, we really just didn't have the money for.
Okay. Let me ask you about picnic tables. There's always a high demand for those because our seniors play board games and card games. Do you think that the current design has enough seating, picnic tables or, or any other name type of table we have there?
We, possibly we could add a couple more. We've left almost all the tables that were there, and then we've added a few, the circular tables. We haven't greatly increased it, but we, we increased in, you know, in areas that we thought were very important as to reinforce the gathering and the idea of people having, like for the kids, having birthday parties there. I suppose a couple more tables wouldn't hurt.
Okay. The other comment I get a lot is regarding some of the landscaping in that northeast portion, corner of the park. There are those large trees, and some of the seniors insist that there are some killer gnats that descend from those trees and interrupt them in their rest and relaxation. So I hope we take a look at, I don't know if that's a true, a valid complaint, but they do complain, and it was raised before, and I know that staff tried to work on that. So that's one small thing. Another is the, are we going to have creative waste receptacles, too, that sort of match the overall design? I think we want to encourage people to do the recycling, and we've got those solar crushers. I don't know, what are they, Steve?
Big bell.
I mean, all these things that, I hope we have enough of those as we're thinking of the design, so we encourage the users of the park to, to clean up after themselves. Let's see, well, and of course, smoking is not permitted in the parks, so we can't be offering any smoking receptacles. That would be contrary. Oh, well, no, do we have a, we can designate a smoking section, can we not in parks? Or is that, that's, that's, I thought the city manager had the ability to designate...
I think when we brought the first ordinance...
The city manager, he can go and smoke there himself, but...
Okay. Okay, so let's forget about that. Let's forget about that. We don't want to encourage that. This is a really important park for us. I'm glad that staff and your firm are putting all these great features in it, and, you know, I look, oh, how about the parking? Are we doing any sort of interesting thing with the parking lot itself? Any of the pebble, the pea, pea gravel or whatever it is, so it's not just asphalt? We've got this great park with all these great features. Something maybe a little different, a little more friendly, you know, grass in between bricks or something like that.
We did, we did explore that, and that's a great, that's a great point, and maybe that extra couple, grant a hundred thousand dollars can go for that, because it is, it does create some budget issues.
Is it that much?
Well, no, I mean, it could be part of it, but it, but it is more expensive than the asphalt. We'd love to see that. We'd love to see a permeable surface if we could. But I will say, there's one other thing we did add that I didn't mention, that here's the existing parking, and we've added a landscape screen to the south side of it to separate that a little bit from the houses across on Raleigh. And if we were doing this additional parking area here, we would extend that screen as well. So we have a nice landscape screen in front of the parking.
Okay. I hope we win an award with this park, because obviously there's been a lot of thought in its design and all the fine little features, so I, I do support it. I hope we can get on it quickly, and I'm sure the neighbors and the whole, all the residents that use it will appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm also very happy with the design. It's definitely one of our most-used parks, Pacific Edison, this park, Palmer Park. Those are the big three, so I'm looking forward to a quick job. The job that was done on the clubhouse was excellent, great design, so this'll, this'll match what we did previously. Job for the staff. Hi, do I have a motion?
Move ADA 102.
Second.
Both come.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Lieber?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next item is oral communication. Following discussion, on the following discussion is limited in time, is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation or report.
Well, for what I think is the first time in...
A miracle.
...12 years, we don't have a card for oral communications.
Don't anybody get up now and give us a card.
So... Weisman, I think you should just turn it in, please.
All is well. All is well in Glendale, all is well in the world.
And the sun will come up tomorrow.
And the sun is going to roll tomorrow, as I stated years ago.
It'll come up in the west.
All right, what's next?
Will we adjourn?
There's no other items unless there's any new business.
Nope. We are adjourned.
Is there a motion and a second?
Move.
ADA.
All right.
I heard it.